Good afternoon, everybody. It's 5:00 PM. We're gonna get this city council workshop, call it to order. Go across and have roll call here. We've got two council members that are not present at the time.
Just one, okay?
We got one. That's it. All right. So, we're gonna go into council discussion and comments.
All right. Chad, the floor is yours. Chad Noble's here with... Yeah, I was going there, Chad. I just figured you could do it yourself. Chad Noble's here with Amaresco. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Got my music going for me?
Yeah, that's your walk-up song, Chad. We do it for everybody.
I was like, all right, here we go. So, my name is Chad Noble. I'm with Amaresco. Thank y'all for allowing me to be here tonight. Charlie Trimble is here with me tonight. He is actually with Neptune. Been with Neptune. He and I were just talking 34 years, so I try not to date him too bad. But, he actually came here just in support of us and wanted to say thanks for your business. We obviously appreciate your business as well. For most of you, if you don't know, some of you I know are new to council. And I wanted to kinda take a few minutes to kinda go over the project that we did about three years ago, or three-plus years ago. And so, I've got a couple slides that I wanna kinda walk through here. Really, stop me, ask me any questions. I've got a little bit of a drainage in my throat, so if I pause, that's kinda why I'm not gonna keep the bottle of water. So, back in 2019, we actually signed a project development agreement with the city to kinda look at the water meters and your system that you had, really from a standpoint of, you know, were they reading correctly? What are their ways to improve the efficiency of that reading process? What all was involved in that? And we spent, basically, from October to February, kinda going through the system, doing a lot of field surveys and different meter testing and different things of that nature. We then kinda brought that stuff back to city staff. We worked with them during the whole time. We went and got pricing, created a project. And basically, in February, the contract was signed. We started implementation, finished up in June of '21. And then, the project actually went into what we call our measurement and verification, or the guarantees stage of the project. From a guarantee standpoint, what we did was, we guaranteed meter accuracy, meaning the meters themselves will remain accurate for the term of our contract. And that's what we do. So, part of that M and V is that we have to come back in year three and do a random sample test, just like we did in the baseline, to compare that to what the meters were in the baseline to ensure the accuracy. So, that's what I'm kinda here tonight to kinda report on. The scope of work that we actually went and did is, we put in an advanced metering infrastructure system, an AMI system. And basically has, what happens is, you got a meter in the ground. That meter has a radio on it. It does have a battery on it. It sends a signal up to a gateway or a tower, a water tower. We've got a couple elevated storage tanks that you have in town. We put basically a black box on there that allows the transmitter to talk to that meter. And then, from there, that data is pushed into the cloud, which goes into the utility billing system, allows you to actually generate a bill to your citizens, but also give you a customer portal where you can go on and see the usage and those things like that. In the event that one of those gateway fails, you also have the ability to drive the system and actually take a drive-by, get a read, actually, by just driving the street. So, if some catastrophic failure happened, you have a backup system in place to do that. The red circles up there are actually where we have the actual gateways installed. This is where the data collectors are. Three of them are on your elevated storage tanks. We put up two monopoles, one at 801 Herman and the other one at Delta State Park. And so, that just kinda gives you, at the bottom is actually the gateway. You can kinda see that box down there. That's where the brains of the system kinda are, and they transmit back to there. And of course, that's where the, there's two antennas on top of the towers that actually pick up the signals and bring it down to there. These were the actual meters that were put in. So, they are called Neptune's Mach-10 line. They are an ultrasonic meter, and we'll talk a little bit about that on, I think it's on the next slide. They have no moving parts. So, they basically use an ultrasonic signal. They're considered a solid-state meter instead of a mechanical meter. And we'll talk a little bit about that in just a second. The one on the far left is the residential meter. The one in the center is typically for inch and a half, two-inch. We call those intermediate meters. They're typically on commercial accounts. Some larger homes or lots will have these. And then, the commercial meters on the far right. One of the beauties about Neptune is, that meter on the far right, you can see how the brains actually just kinda pull out. So, your staff really liked the fact that you could actually mount the meter. And you're talking about big pipe that moves. If you pull it out, and you gotta have cranes and all this stuff. If everything was to fail with the electronics, simply unbolt the top, pull it out, put a new bolt in, and kinda move on. So, it's kinda one of the features that Neptune shows. But, this is kinda some of the pictures that you'll see in the field. Contractually, we were basically scoped out to do about 4,800 meters. As you can see, we actually installed a little bit more than what was part of the contract, just to things that came up and data that was correct. One of the things that comes out of these projects is an accurate database. So, every city goes through a situation, a lifecycle, where they don't typically have data, gets people move in, move out, things transition and staff. Data gets lost. And I've never seen an accurate database in my 20-plus years of doing these type of projects. And so, we actually started with the database, kind of this island scope. We finished with what was on the left. You can see some of the size changes, and all that got corrected when we did the project. Part of the project is, we collected GPS coordinates. So, that way, you actually have a coordinate that you can actually go find the meter box. So, 'cause right now, nobody's gonna see that meter, right? And so, it's actually reading. So, if somebody needs to go find a meter, they can. They got GPS coordinates. We took pictures before and after of the meter boxes, the install, the reads, everything that was, all the data, and it was QC several different times throughout our process. Any ancillary materials that were needed, gaskets, boxes, lids, anything that was failing, we kinda replaced as part of that project as well. And then, we installed an actual customer portal. So, the overall contract price was about 3.3 million at the end of the day. Any questions so far? So, as I mentioned, we are responsible for coming back and doing meter tests. And so, I wanna start with kinda talking about the meter itself just a little bit. So, before we did this project, the city had mechanical meters. That is the meter here on the left. It was, Neptune calls it a nutating disc. And basically, that ball in there, it's a, it has water that kinda flows in. There's a set volume of water that's actually reading when it comes in there, and it causes that disc to just kinda mutate back. And then, that spindle that's connected to the top is actually what's reading it. Over time, this is a mechanical meter. It's constantly spinning. It actually slows down, wears out. I've spent 20-plus years in this business and never seen a meter read fast that's this type. The only meter I've ever seen read is, that read, read fast was a multi-jet meter, which you have none of them. And it was one brand. I've seen it read fast twice, I think, on two different occasions. But typically, any positive displacement meter that we have ever tested always fails slower, which means a customer's not paying for the revenue or the water that's going through it, even though you could be pumping water through that meter. Additionally, it fails usually worse on the low-flow side. So, that drippy faucet, that leaky valve, that leaky irrigation, it's not picking up because it takes a certain amount to push that spindle. And if anything gets in there, you can think about it. It's got harder to actually grind. The meter on the right is what staff ended up using, which is a solid-state meter. If you look through the end of that meter, you basically see a clear tube. And it basically means that there's nothing to wear out, right? So, with that, you get a 20-year warranty. The old meters had a five-year, half-a-million gallon warranty for a 5/8 by 3/4. These new meters have a 20-year warranty. So, there's nothing to calibrate. There's nothing to basically go check in the field. Usually, what we see if these fail, they completely fail, and you can't get a read at all. And soon as that read happens, staff knows about it. Send the signal out to the staff. They get it on their computer. They immediately know, hey, I got a failure. They can send somebody out, check it, see what actually happened. So, that's kinda the meter itself. Any questions about the meter technology, where you're at today? So, you have all of these are Mach-10. They're all solid-state meters. They also pick up a lot lower flows. So, you can see here, I kinda put it under a chart just to talk a little bit about accuracy. You can see that the Mach-10 on a 5/8 by 3/4 goes all the way down to .1 GPM, whereas a T-10, which is what you used to have, read .25. So, you get a lot more accurate meter, especially on the low-end side. You also get more volume through it on the high end. So, you can see the bottom chart basically says the normal operating range is from .1 to 25 gallons, whereas the old normal operating range of the T-10, the mechanical, was .5 to 20. And you can see, I put a two-inch up there, too. If you wanted to have an idea of how the big meters compare, they're about the same as well, just picking up that lower flow on the low side. The AWWSC 700 is the standard. So, that's what basically these meter manufacturers are trying to accomplish and get to. They have to at least meet the minimum standard. As you can see, they're well exceeding that minimum standard. So, I'm happy to report, your meters are doing great. They're doing exactly what we expected them to do. They tested very, very good. We, during the baseline development three years ago, we randomly sampled about 68 meters. That gives us about a 90% confidence factor of what's out there when you look at statistics. Those tested, that's the data at the very top. So, as you can see, those meters were failing on the low-flow side. They were reading about 76%, which means any leak, you weren't picking up. Those little drippy faucets, those toilets that run and shut off and shut off, you weren't picking up that. In a situation of, you know, irrigation valves I mentioned earlier, you missed a lot of that revenue. So, what we have to do is, we look at these tests. We have to form a standard. So, we look at AW debate, American Water Works Association, and says, you look at a weighted average. So, in theory, we look at low-flow, mid-flow, and high-flow. And what that means is, what they said, and this standard was put in years ago, right? It says about an average residential user, 15% of the water would flow through the low-flow side. 15% would go through the high-flow side. And most people, when they're using water, are using it in that mid-flow range. So, we weight those averages to create that weighted average on the end. Now, what I have seen over the years is, when we run this model, there's a, we always tend to get more revenue than what we actually project. And I've always asked my engineers, why? What are we doing? Why are we getting? And the only thing that we can come up with and that we think happens is, is, when did we start? When, 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 in the old days, we never had low-flow devices, right? We didn't have low-flow toilets. We didn't have low-flow aerators on all our sinks. We had wide-open stuff, right? That's when this standard was put back. Now, we have those. So, a lot of the water that we think is happening is going more through the low-flow side. We were missing it. In this case, 76%. You're only missing that. So, that's why we're seeing more water revenue come through for cities when we project out the revenues, because we're now capturing that low-flow situation. The bottom table there is what the current meters that we just pulled out of the ground. So, we went and did the same random test. We sent them to a third-party testing lab. That test lab tested them according to AWA standards, just like we did on the baseline. And you can see your meters are reading 99.3, 99.13, 98.5, which means your weighted average is roughly 99%. So, that is great news for you guys. It's great news for us, because that means we've actually met the guarantee. Yes, sir?
Curiosity. I'm a person that loves innovation and all that kinda stuff. So, basically, we have a battery in our meters, and it is doing ultrasonic wave through the water, mirror it off the bottom, comes back up, and it detects water flow. Does it, does it change in accuracy depending on how pure a water system is? Or, I mean, I'm assuming that that's what it detects, is maybe minerals in the water as it's flowing by, or how is that?
No, it's detecting velocity.
Velocity? It's, but it's seeing something move, right?
Yeah, I would see the particles in the...
Right.
Well, basically, what it's doing, it's sending sound waves upstream and downstream.
Okay.
And that calculation is determining how much water is flowing through the opening that's in that particular size meter. So, it's not based off of particles in the water. It's based off how fast that sound travels upstream and downstream, and then you go into a big equation, so to speak.
Sure.
That's what comes up.
Has a brain. So, then, it's powered by a battery. What type of batteries do we have in there? And what's, does it make a difference on the age of the battery? Just questions. I don't know if they're valid or not, but I think I'll...
Yeah, so, good question. So, the battery itself, which is in the radio, okay? That actually has a 20-year prorated warranty. So, it's 10 years full. So, for the first 10 years, if the battery fails, you get full value replacement. If the battery fails in year 12, there's a percentage. And they've got a chart that they actually show you, that shows you what that percentage is. But, it's a 20-year lifecycle. I think it's a lithium battery?
It's a lithium ion battery. It is similar to when you go buy a new car battery, you know? You get a, you get a warranty for it for so many years, and then when it gets some years, you get a certain percentage off of a new one when you purchase it. So, it works the same way. The percentage is, as you go, as you get in the higher years, the percentage goes down.
And so, then, as this battery, of course, it depletes over time. I mean, it's just what batteries do. Doesn't change anything in the accuracy. It's...
No, sir. There's a, there's an icon actually on the meter, on the outside of it, and it'd also be software signal, signal. But, once it gets to less, when it estimates that it has a year of life left, it'll start flashing on an icon. And then, once, well, that icon appears, then once that icon starts flashing, you need to get it out immediately. But, when it first appears, you can get that meter out.
Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you.
Would you get the meter out, or just the, the battery and the radio?
Well, it depends on what size it is. If you have it like Chad showed a minute ago, the larger meters, you can pull out the UMA.
Okay.
On the smaller ones, you replace the whole thing.
You just replace the whole thing. They're integrated unit, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see how that is all integrated into one. The other one, actually, you would just pull out the guts. So, based on that, I have just kind of a quick summary slide and can take any questions. But basically, the meters have been tested by a third-party lab. They all passed those according to the standards and to the guarantee. The AMI system is actually, we checked the data. It's still reading as expected. Not every month, you will have 100% reads. I mean, somebody parks a car over a system, parks, you know, a dumpster over it, and that's when staff sees it, and they have to go out and actually get a manual read, or just have somebody move their trailer that they parked over the system, 'cause it was blocking the signal. But, it's all reading. And as you can see, I've listed kinda the warranties down below of what those are that we just kinda talked about. And I'm here to, I've got an actual full report that we sent to staff. It shows all the pictures, the individual test data, everything that you have. If you wanna see it, it's about a 20-something-page document from a revenue standpoint. We rerun the calculations based on some of the initial calculations. We projected about 263,000, roughly 264,000 in actually projected revenue. The results, based on the updated accuracy test, we exceeded that and got about 276,000, so roughly about $11,000 more than what we projected to actually run.
Per year?
Yes, sir. Yeah. And so, the idea there is that you carry that out, and that's what the staff used to actually pay for the project over the term.
One last question for me. So, y'all have been doing this for a while, and you have hundreds of thousands of these out there somewhere, right?
Yes, sir.
What percentage of these have failed, that you know of?
Failed? Like the meter itself?
Well...
Or the process? Like, what it...
Just that it, it just didn't read correctly. It was either way more than what it should've been, or just, just didn't read correctly. I don't, I'm not necessarily asking for they just went dead.
Yeah.
But, it, it just wasn't accurate.
So, from an accuracy standpoint, we've, we've hit the guarantees, right? So, anytime, and what we've kinda standardized is putting in on almost all ultrasonic meters, right? The new solid-state. We used to install mechanical meters, and we actually build our financial model when they actually, about five years, we start to taper them off on what we actually guarantee, because we knew that meter was going to fail. These, when we forecast out, we actually keep it flat, because we know the meters have held the accuracy. So, ultrasonics have, ultrasonic meters themselves have been around a long time. They've been used in plants and chemical plants, but, because they had power, right? We would use electrical power to run it. What's changed in the water world is the fact of the battery. So, the battery now, 'cause we didn't have power in the pit. So, now that we've got batteries that will last that long, we now can take that same ultrasonic or magnetic technology and put it in a pit environment. And so, that's what's changed the water world. So, for both of us, we've had fun doing this the last, you know, 10 years that ultrasonics have been out, because now, we've been able to go back and actually put in a product that will truly last, you know, 15-plus years.
So, I like the warranty idea. That's great. But, so again, I don't know if I had got the answer. I was looking for it. Is there a percentage of them that do not?
You will have, on a yearly basis, you will have some fail that will be just warranty failures, okay? Just product failures. When they fail, you get no read.
Okay.
You don't get a slower read. You don't get a faster read. You just get nothing. It will not send a signal. The radio is typically what's failing. And you think about it, that battery's powering that. So, when, if the battery's not powering it, we don't get a read. So, the read that comes in is, and, and I would say, I don't know how many of you guys have failed here, but I would say it's, ideally, it's less than 1% probably.
Oh, yeah. Across the board, for us, as a manufacturer, it's way less than 1%.
Do you answer the question I was getting at? Because I wondered if the malfunction would create a bad reading. But, you telling me that it doesn't read at all is what I...
It just fails.
Wanted to hear. Oh, I wanted to know.
So, how does the smart app apply to this? Or, okay, so, from the radio to wherever it goes for the utility billing, and then also to the smart app?
So, if I recall, you guys have the ENCODE portal?
We have ENCODE and Watersmart.
Oh, Watersmart. You got Watersmart, okay. So, thanks for refreshing my memory there. I couldn't remember if it was Watersmart or ENCODE. So, Neptune AMI system transmits the data to the cloud, okay? That data then is pushed over, the read is pushed over into your utility billing software, which is ENCODE. ENCODE is the source of truth, okay? So, that's where the data relies. And then, Watersmart integrates with ENCODE and also with Neptune to pull data and pull reads and presents that actually into your customer portal or your smart app.
So, who oversees that? Who's responsible for that app, that portion?
Watersmart. So, the Watersmart would be, they... Yeah, it's, it's an automatic...
It's through an API.
Through an API, yeah. But, you have cloud, you have a software agreement, SaaS agreement, with Watersmart. So, they're responsible, Neptune's responsible for their software in the cloud, and then ENCODE's got theirs. And so, all of them charge you to keep sure that that data is up to date, and all their software is kept up to date on a daily, on a yearly basis. But, there's an API that's communicating back and forth between those software. That was set up at the very beginning.
I think that may be where the challenge is. So, after, after, were you with Siemens before?
Yes.
You came and did the energy efficiency and all that.
I did.
And that's a similar program. By replacing all of this, we were gonna offset it. We never, okay.
Yeah, we said, we, that was, I was with Siemens for 17 years, and, and then I left about, almost six years ago.
Yeah, we didn't sell this project as a revenue-neutral project.
Not at all.
We didn't sell this project as if the revenue would offset the debt. That wasn't part of the conversation. Our meters were 15 years old when I brought this to council, and the conversation wasn't that this'll be...
Yeah, it was not a self-performing project.
No.
It was basically one that basically said, hey, you got meters that are inaccurate. The other big selling point of this was giving the citizens the ability to see their data...
Yeah.
And determine if they had a leak, determine if they had continued. And we don't like to call them leaks. We call them continuous water usages, 'cause we don't know what's happening. That customer could be using continuous water, and it's not necessarily a leak. But, they have the ability to see that. It was a big benefit to customer service. It was a big benefit to operational, not reading the meters manually, sending that out. There's cost saving associated with all that.
I think that's where the challenge is, because, so after the Boys and Girls Club, I signed up for it, and I've been watching it. And some of the data on there, there wasn't a billing information since April of this year. It skipped all those months. All the data that was, that was similar to it was not on that form. I mean...
Usage should still be going in the...
It is, but that, that's where my concern is, is you have some data there, but you don't have other data there. So, it makes me wonder what's really accurate, what's really correct. I mean, how do we, how is it defendable? But, I guess we're, so it sounds to me like the meter, if there is a problem, the data going into it, that, that's where the problem could exist, is the data from point A to point B, and then being disseminated to the billing, and then also to the Watersmart app.
So, the, so let's, we need to separate those two.
Yeah, they're too separate.
We gotta separate those two, right? So, you can go into, if you're missing data in your Watersmart app, you can request city to give you directly from Neptune. And that is, that is going to be your profile of how you're using water and all of the accurate data. It'll show you, if you have a continuous water usage, it'll show you what your consumption is. What we have seen in, throughout the course of these projects is, there can be gaps in the syncing of that data to the third-party Watersmart file. So, they're independent of each other. Your billing of what a customer gets billed comes from Neptune. That read gets sent to the billing file. It has nothing to do with the app.
Okay, I understand that.
Yeah.
No, I understand that. But, we're telling our residents that you can go to that app and you can see the data that you're using for the billing. So, they should be able to, to match together. And, and the reason I, I say that is, is mine said it had a leak.
Okay.
Okay? And I knew where the leak, it was a drip on a faucet. So, turned the faucet off. I turned the valve off. It ended. It's still showing there's a drip. And it also said it was two gallons, two gallons an hour. Well, it took four hours to fill up a four-gallon, I mean, a one-gallon, it took four hours to fill up a one-gallon container. So, that's, I guess where I'm going to this is, is we had the Boys and Girls Club and the billing, the billing situation there. We have to be able to defend both sides. We have to be able to defend that we're charging correctly, 'cause we wanna make sure we're charging the correct amount, not under, not over.
Yeah. So, I don't know, I would, you know, the source of truth goes back to the Neptune system. So, you'll, you know, I'd be curious to pull your meter file, have, have the city send you your profile of what it looked like and see what that shows. You would wanna check to see how that API is, 'cause realize it's not real-time. And I try to tell people that all the time, because that data will sync up ever so often. And if it misses a data, it's gotta wait a whole 24-hour period till it shows another app that goes in. Sometimes, I have seen, you got two different, you got a third party trying to pull that data. It may be that there's a gap in data and it doesn't see that gap. You know, it doesn't backfill it. And so, I'd have to figure out how the API, I don't remember how the API was programmed. Are we pulling historical? Are we pulling historical, how many days back? Can we pull it even? We just have to look at that connection point would be the first thing I will look at. You should be able to pull the actual data from the Neptune system. That's your defense, you know, not necessarily the app. The app is kind of a tool that kind of helps customers see. And then if you go deeper dive, you dive deeper into the actual Neptune software, which is the three sixty software.
And if you call us, we'll send somebody out immediately to meet with you.
Because you do have the ability to data log.
That's right. And he'll, he'll run the actual information out of Neptune. He's not pulling it from Water Smart.
Yeah, he can actually, correct me if I'm wrong, you can take the tool and actually ping the meter directly while you're standing there and actually see exactly what's going on.
With his iPad.
Yeah. And you can see it right, what's going on.
Or she does.
Or she, yeah.
So my question is, is this data of unusual water usage available to the city?
Yeah.
So would it be possible for our city to notify a water user when there's something unusual going on with their consumption?
That would be your decision. There's time associated with that.
That information is available.
Yeah, the, the software itself from Neptune of the AMI system basically has all the data. What you do with the data is up to you and how you want to.
It's in Neptune three sixty.
My example is, I have a house down in Rockport. Now, Rockport doesn't have any water in town. They've got to import all their water. They're very careful about their consumption because Corpus Christi demands it. Some of the water that Rockport uses comes from Bay City.
Yep.
Has to travel almost two hundred miles in a pipeline before it gets to my house. And the city will call me sometimes and tell me, our computer is showing that you have a commode that's running. Because we can see that every once an hour, you're using two gallons of water or something. And if they see that the sprinkler system is leaking, then the city picks up on that. They go to the house, knock on the door if there's nobody home, like, I'm not. They just turn the meter off and send me a notice saying that we've turned your meter off because there's some sort of a big leak. And when you get back to town and get it fixed, call us and we'll swing by and turn it back on. But is that something that El Campo can do? I mean, we're in the service business.
Yeah, it sounds like they have a full-time person watching the system, you know, because that's typically what it would take.
So it would take a full-time person.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you're talking about, if you're watching it and they're giving you that kind of, I don't know how long the delay is, but I mean, you've got to be, you know, somebody's got to respond to do that.
So the computer, the computer on our forty-eight hundred meters couldn't just redline something and send a report to the city once a day or so saying that there's a problem here, there's a problem here, a problem here.
Yeah, I mean, you could pull up at any time and run a report and show you what's been, had continuous usage and stuff. But again, you know, the only thing I would caution you at is a little bit, is what if I am using continuous water?
What if what?
What if I am using continuous water? What if I have a business that uses, like my swimming pool constantly goes up and down a lot.
So in that case, they would know it because it looks that way every day.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's not some, you can do whatever you want. It's your data, you own it, you have the ability to run all kind of reports, whatever you want to do. It's just, you know, I've seen the other side of this, just in my experiences, is a big brother watching me. You know, you'll get that from some citizens as well. People will think, hey, why are you watching me? Why are you calling, you don't, I don't want you, you know, we don't know when you're using water, we don't know how you're using.
Why are you monitoring how often I'm flushing my commode?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I've seen both sides. So I've just, politically from a personal level, I've been on the other side of that conversation too, so.
Yeah, and the onus of forty-eight hundred meters is a lot for our staff. Although you, you have, you have procedurally indicated to the customers whether we've seen signs of a leak or not. Our staff does do that when there's high consumption at the end of the month, so.
So in a situation like that, I'm just saying that it looks like our deal with the Boys and Girls Club would have been an enormous red flash and light saying something crazy's going on here. And we might, that might tell the city, you need, we need to call this customer and let him know.
Yeah.
He did. We physically have, we've worked on that.
Thank you.
So it's, it's really, to me, it sounds like, and I appreciate, thank you for coming and discussing this.
We're excited, this is part of, it's a good project.
It sounds like to me that it's the data and how it's distributed is where part of the challenge may be.
Okay.
Not actually, I mean, like I said, the Boys and Girls Club, and we can keep going on on that, but my, my struggle here is we cannot sit here and definitively say there was not a problem. We can't because they were billed an abnormal amount of water. And no one could prove that it had leaked, no one could prove that it hadn't been delivered. So we can't keep saying that, well, we did all these things, but it continued to happen. That's why I asked for this, is so that we could figure out what's going on. And we tell them, use the smart, or Water Smart or whatever, use that app. And there's clearly some disconnect between this part and this part. And that's, I think we're going to have to get with those guys to get that improved.
So I'm not all familiar with the water, just want to ask a general question. Like when you say you couldn't prove it, so the Neptune didn't show the water usage and consumption when you ran the report?
It did.
Oh, it did? Okay. So you could prove it because that's got the data.
Well, it's the Neptune meter, but when we went to the Boys and Girls Club, I mean, what was it? Seven thousand? I don't even remember what it was now, seven thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Yeah, it went from a three hundred dollar bill to a nine hundred dollar bill to a five thousand dollar bill to a thousand dollar bill. And I looked at their smart, I looked at their smart app. That's why I brought this up. I looked at there, they showed me where there were days and days and days of no data. Then it was days of negative, they had a negative reading at one point.
Yeah, you should, the only thing I can caution is go back to the Neptune data because that's where you're going to see.
Just for point of reference, we pulled their meter to test it for accuracy. The city paid for that accuracy test. It came back accurate.
Okay, yeah.
So, so there was a, there was a transition period. So that's probably, I'm presuming that's where the.
Neptune would still show the data, you know, you'd still see the consumption amount.
So there was a, there was a switch of meters and so.
Transition period.
Yeah, there was a transition period when we switched those out.
Look, guys, all I want is confidence in our residents, that they know that what they're paying for is what they're receiving. It's not an us against them.
Oh, I agree.
But I, I mean, it's not. And I feel like there was something abnormal here and it should never have gotten to that point that they had to come and it would be agenda item to address this.
We, we agree with you. That's why we processed a bill adjustment, a leak adjustment for their water and sewer. Unfortunately, our ordinance ham-tied, a hamstringed us where we could only do one in eighteen months. And so that's why they were put in front of you. There was no argument that there was an issue there. There was an argument about how to handle the ordinance. And I can't violate ordinances, but you certainly can tell me to change how we, we do these things. That's a council decision. It was never us against the Boys and Girls Club. It wasn't presented as such. I still don't feel that way, but the meter was accurate. I'm not sure if there, I regret that there was trouble with Water Smart. I do think we need to look into that and that is something we will follow up with. Yeah.
I, I will say that I'm confident that your meters are working as planned. I mean, based on the testing that we're seeing, the meters are accurate, they're performing. If you do have an issue like this come up, it sounds like you might have had an issue come up. I would say defer back to the Neptune data. And I, I hear your point loud and clear about those transitions. And that's always a struggle we have with third-party portals, is now you got another sync up and another link where data could be mixed, you know? I know that Neptune has now offered, they came out with their own portal, right? That is actually pulling from their own internal data. So it's not like you're going to a third-party integration, you're pulling directly from their software. So maybe that's an option down the road if for some reason I'm not trying to push you out of Water Smart. Water Smart is a great product, you know, and there's a lot of tools and features with that. But if that's a concern, then there's another option there for you if you want to. But the, but I will tell you, confidence wise, I feel pretty, I feel very confident based on the test that we did that the meters are performing.
I think they worked too well in October. My sprinkler system worked every day in October because.
Oh, yeah, they caught it there.
What's the, and, and this might be, I don't know, the delay, the delay associated with the Neptune data gets the data and then it's sending it obviously to cloud and it's, Water Smart's grabbing it and sticking it and putting it in an app that people can actually see, right? And so, so the, what's the delay associated with that? Is it, I mean, is it like, does it get, is it every few days or something that gets updated or is it?
Isn't that like every three to five hours?
Oh, it's that fast?
So.
Okay.
Depends on how often they have their collectors program to send the information.
Right, that's what I was curious if there's something there.
I think it's every twelve. I think it's on a twelve-hour rotation and it may be pulling data, the API may be pulling data. But I think, and I'd have to go back and look and we just had to pull the system, but it may be that the, so the data on the, the radio is sending a signal, but from there, it sits there and it only may push it every twelve hours or something like that. It's, there's a certain time period.
So I was wondering if something, obviously, any, with any kind of data system, the, the, you know, you're going to pay more with a higher sample rate.
And that's why I tell you, it's not real time. Make sure citizens know this is not real time data. If you want real time data, go stand there, data log it, you can pull directly with where you're going. You know, it's not, we don't have real time data like we do an electric meter.
That may not be that big a deal as long as you've got this point in time and that point in time, it shouldn't matter, but anyway.
If you have a leak, it does matter.
Yeah, yeah.
Then it would validate it, so to.
Well.
To a customer reward point, we need to answer that.
Might be something there from that standpoint, from a sample point, how often it takes data, I don't know.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if you, if you have leakage, like we know, one of our QC aspects is if we put a meter in the ground and it starts to show up as a leak, we know something's going on, right? And so we've been, you know, customers complain about us having, when we put a meter in the ground, they say, oh, you caused one of my pipes to break or something like that. Well, we go back and actually look at the data and does it show usage as soon as we put the meter in? Because it'll actually, you can go pull a data log and actually it'll start picking it up and showing continuous usage as soon as it starts picking up. So you can data log the meter, there's just some extra steps, it's not going to pull it in the app yet because that's going to be a delay. But if you want to know exactly, like I've been able to track down, we put the meter in at twelve oh five and at twelve oh six it started leaking and we knew it exactly. And so our guys go back and say, yeah, we caused a leak on the.
Last year, my backyard was wet, real wet. I came here to City Hall and I walked up to the window and I said, can you look on the, can you pull my account up? Tell me, do I have a water leak? They told me I didn't. Well, the, the leak kept getting worse and worse and worse, so I called the city and they sent a man over and he hooked up to the meter and it was continuous leak. Why wouldn't the city have known that when I came a week earlier?
Right. Once you answer that question, I have one, one more question too.
That's what I wonder if it's something about a data delay or sample delay.
I have two meters, yes. They checked, they checked the other meter instead of, they didn't check the irrigation meter, they checked the house meter. It was the irrigation, okay.
Make sure the stuff knows.
I see.
All right, so I am sold on the accuracy of your meter.
Thank you.
Okay? Your meter. I'm sold on the accuracy of your meter. Usage is usage. I don't like the app and all that stuff that's going on because there, there's stuff that happens there. Have you ever found any discrepancies with, because your, your meter communicates by radio transmission into Neptune? Have you ever seen a miscommunication in that link? I'm still trying to figure out, you know, I mean. Okay. The cloud, the whole thing, whatever, that I don't understand, has there ever been a wrong communication from your meters to your base?
Usually if there's a problem, there will be colons show up in the reading and that's a first indication that there's.
What will show them?
Colons.
A colon.
Digits.
It will give you an actual read, it gives you.
That means that there's a short circuit going on somewhere. So if you do ever get colons, and these guys know that, I'm sure that that's a problem code right there. So if you get colons, boom, that's immediately, you need to go look at that meter and see if there's a connection problem. Most likely now, what it was in the old days is there used to be a wire from the meter to a transmitter. But now that it's integrated, that connection problem could be internally metered. And if you get colons inside, then there is a connection problem between the meter register and the meter radio transmitting it out. So, but it will give you a code. If you get colons and they know there's a problem and the meter should be pulled, then it's a problem.
But we, but we're at, I mean, the resident and the citizen is at the mercy of the city. Because we don't have the, you know, we, we have to trust that all of this information is there. And I guess that's, and it's, it's available, it's being monitored, it's been disseminated out correctly. There's no errors anywhere. And then, and I think that's where I'm still trying to understand, how did the Boys and Girls Club get that, that big of a difference? Since then, I've had probably ten, fifteen people come to me and tell me that there's no way their bills keep increasing. But I think I may know part of it is because our fees keep going.
That's correct.
That's part of it. But this one, I know, they, they were close, they didn't, they weren't even at their business and they had it turned off and they got a three hundred dollar more bill or something. But anyway, my, my point is how did, there's something from here, from the meter, to when it finally gets to where it's in the system. There's something, to me, there's something just not adding up.
I think he's alluding to the meter to Ncode. There must be, or, or, well, for sure, Ncode's at Water, Water Smart, we proved that tonight. But Neptune to Ncode, is it, is it communicating correctly?
That, that should be because you're pulling the same file. You're going, you're pinging, Ncode is going to pull the data from Neptune, right? So, and again, it's, the source of truth goes back to on the meter itself, on the accuracy of the read. You go to that meter and you can pull that data and you can log that profile. You can always check, you know, by looking at, hey, did we see the consumption? Is it, is it there, but.
So am I hearing that what it's reading over here after it went through all the cloud and the stuff, you could go over to this meter and if you get a discrepancy in the two, you could actually come to the meter and ping it and find it there versus after it went and did all the.
Yeah, so like, again, I go back to it's not real time, right?
Sure.
So you can't look at your computer screen and see exactly what's in the field, right?
Sure.
But you can take a laptop, these guys have a laptop device.
iPad.
A what?
iPad.
iPad, yeah, handheld. So you can take that and go to that meter and you can connect directly to that meter and say.
That's interesting.
See, this is what I got. And it will actually data log all the last like twenty-four hours, it will pull points in the data and pull it all in. And you can say, here's what.
So there's a, so there's a check.
Exactly what they did for me. They told me exactly where my leak was, I mean, what it was.
That's helpful to see if there is a problem between here and there.
Yeah, and that's why I said you go back to the technology. And technology, you know, to, to your comment and, and I hear what you're saying, you've kind of paid for a system, you want everything to be right and working. We're so much ahead from where you used to be. You know, it sounds like you had a problem at the Boys and Girls Club. In the old days, if you had the mechanical meters, you had one read and another read thirty days later, you wouldn't have had anything. Now we actually have the ability to kind of truly pull, it just takes a little extra step to go get the data.
I guess there's no backup. Technology is wonderful till it doesn't work. It's just like this phone.
True.
It's a fantastic device until the cell tower's down.
That's true.
I mean, it is, and I'm not, I'm not accusing your technology of not working. It's a several, there's no backup, there's no, like you said, there's no mechanical or, there's no. Everything I do in my, my, my industry, we have redundancy and some of it's mechanical, some of it's automated. And it's because we want to make sure we have that validation and verification.
So there is backup and I'll explain a little bit of that. So you're right, if technology goes down, you may lose that, that, that read. But the meter stores ninety-six days of data, of hourly consumption. So you've got ninety-six days to find the problem. Then it sends it into the data, the gateway and that stores another, you remember what the gateway store, B five? IOTs, do you know how many days they store? I can't remember off the top of my head. But I know there's ninety-six days of data in that meter itself. So there's quite a, even if it misses a signal, you can go data log it and get ninety-six days, you know, worth of data. So it's, it's a pretty long time. You should be able to find a problem within that time period, you know? So there's a little bit of, and also the, the way that that gateway, if you remember the coverage map, those.
Overlap.
Overlap. So they're picking up, so like, these meters that are in here are reading by possibly three different collectors and seeing which one, it's going to pick up and go to the strongest one. If they can't read it that one, it goes to the next one. It says, hey, you know, I gotta, gotta get a read.
Is there enough coverage on the west side of town?
We have five, isn't it five?
Five. So as you grow, well, as you grow, this, remember, this was, this was three or four years ago. There's a good chance if you're having to manually read or go drive-by read meters, you might have to add another gateway at some point in the future.
We talked about.
We see that a lot, you know, I mean, this is just part of growth.
We're not there yet, but yeah.
And again, you got to weigh the balance. One of the things that you have the ability also do now is Neptune's come out with a cellular one. So if you have three or four that are way out somewhere, don't necessarily have to add a full gateway there, put a cellular radio on it and it comes right into the software. So lots of different options there for that. Other questions? Good questions.
This has all been very interesting, interesting technology and you're great at explaining this, thank you.
I try, I got a twenty-plus years doing this stuff and I brought him for backup, he's got thirty-somethings.
Mr. Hancock, I wanted to make one comment on your, on your vacation home. Now, a lot of utilities do flag accounts, like I cover Arizona as well. So they have a lot of properties out there that they'll flag what they call the snowboard account